Twenty-eight, two thousand and thirteen. Would you kindly stand and please join us in saluting the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we're here to recognize our friend, Kenan Canal, who is moving on to greener pastures, we hope. And Kenan is here tonight with his wife Shelby and his daughter Shaylan. And you have a daughter Divine, who is doing the smart thing and staying in school, so we welcome you here tonight. This is kind of a bittersweet moment for us and our town. We're losing a good employee, and that's kind of the bitter part. We're losing a person who's been very faithful to our town. But the good part is, he's moving on to hopefully, you know, his professional development and what he wants to do. And I think that's important in everybody's life when they want to better themselves. And the ability to better yourself, you can do it. We know that. So even though, you know, tongue-in-cheek, I'm saying, "I don't want to see you go," and I think I'm speaking for the board and the town, I think we appreciate, you know, everything you've done. So I don't know if any other members of the board want to say anything.
I think you've put it very well. He's done a great job for the time he's been here, and we certainly will miss him.
Absolutely.
There's no doubt about that.
Tom?
I'd just like to thank Kenan. We're on a personal basis. I know, being involved with the sports program, I know there were some issues back in two thousand and nine. We didn't know what the parking wreck, whether we had people to support the field. In fact, there was rumors that our senior in the baseball season, where we ultimately won the state championship, would have to play away games. And Kenan came in, and I know he worked with our chairman at the time, Steve Wakelin, to put together a program to get the field cut, maintained. And even today, you know, I take a lot of pride. You know, this particular Friday night was our league championship game in football. And to see the field nicely lined in pink in celebration for breast national cancer awareness, are little things that Kenan does in town that makes him a special not only employee but person that I've had the pleasure of working with and talking to on a personal basis. So as I told you the other day on the phone, I wish you nothing but the best and wish you a lot of success in your new job over in Waymouth.
With that being said, I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas Kenan Canal has served the town of Abington faithfully since June fifteenth, nineteen ninety-eight as superintendent of streets. Whereas Kenan Canal has always taken great pride in doing his job, exhibiting professionalism and expertise in all aspects of his duties. Whereas Kenan Canal has encouraged teamwork within the Highway Department as well as with other town departments, working towards the common goal of doing what is good for the town of Abington, and has been instrumental in helping boards, committees, in facilitating many community events such as parades the night before the Fourth, and most recently the tricentennial events. Whereas Kenan Canal has demonstrated a strong work ethic and incurred many accolades from town departments as well as many residents for his skills and proficiency in maintaining safe road conditions under difficult circumstances, layoffs, increased duties, and budget cuts. You will agree with that. Whereas Kenan Canal has worked diligently to obtain grant monies to implement such projects as the revitalization of North Abington Center, which has expanded parking and enhanced the appearance of the area. Whereas Kenan Canal has exhibited determination, strong leadership qualities, and has known as a go-to person when someone needs help, always getting this job done. Whereas Kenan J. Canal is joyed participating in the Abington-St. Patrick Day Parade with the Highway Department's entry often seeking first place. Now therefore, we, the Abington Board of Selectmen, on behalf of the town of Abington and its residents, want to extend our thanks and appreciation to Kenan Canal for his service of fifteen years and dedicated to the town of Abington. We wish you the best in your new challenge, and you are taking on -- you will be missed. Thank you.
I just want to take a minute to thank everybody here for coming out tonight, first of all. I really appreciate that. It's funny, I remember way back, fifteen years ago, when I had my interview in this very room. It was a brand-new town hall. I was pacing the hallway back and forth, a little bit nervous, you know, coming onto a new challenge. And I was interviewed by the board at the time. And I remember at the end of the interview, the chairman asked me if I wanted to stick around to find out, you know, if I had made the appointment or who was going to make the appointment. And I said, "I'd love to, but I got to get out of here. My wife's in labor." And I'm feeling labor pains, and I had to get home. And here we are, I'm looking at my daughter who's learning to drive in another few months. It's been that long, and I can't believe that much time's gone by. I've had so many good memories. You just mentioned quite a few of them. And I've had a lot of help. I'd like to thank my crew, my staff, particularly my right arm, you know, Jack and Lisa in the office, done so much for me. John Schnager before him, the office crew up here. Just so many people, I could never list them all. Contractors locally, Glenn LePointe, we've done so much work together. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention him here. And if working with him's wrong, then I don't want to be right. I really, I can't tell you how much support the department heads have given also, both chiefs that are currently working and a previous chief certainly here tonight. So thank you. Thanks to everybody. Thanks for the opportunity to work here.
With that being said, I'd like to take a five-minute intermission, if we could, and we'll start the meeting in five minutes. Okay, good. Thank you.[423.81]
Manages upwards to sixty master plan communities. What we're going to talk about today, and I apologize to those of you in this room who have sat through this one or two, or in some cases, three times before, but we'll work our way through it. The thing that we have here is a challenge, a mediated challenge, that we noticed that when we came to look at this project for the first time, is that there's insufficient water and wastewater to move forward. Currently, the agreement with the town of Waymouth is to supply a thousand, water that will service a thousand residential units and 300,000 square foot of commercial. And that is great, that's a fantastic thing, but within about a year and a half or two years, we will have built all of that residential and not be able to build any more residential. We certainly can build a commercial, provided that we can find market for that commercial. So whether we like it or not, this community is going to come to what I've been quoted as saying, "A hard stop." We will not be able to move forward unless we have water and wastewater. So one of the ways that water and wastewater is going to move forward is by someone either building a sewer treatment plant, tapping into another town's source, et cetera, and we'll get into that in quite length. So Southfield is not viable for private investment today without water and wastewater. Also, we have a whole bunch of residents now, and those residents basically live in the town of Waymouth. They vote for Waymouth representation, and then Waymouth can appoint two people to the current tri-town board, and that is their governmental representation, and that's really not a plan for success. Another issue is uncertainty for provisions of services. Currently, tri-town is set up by the state through the Enabling Act to provide a bunch of services, such as beyond sewer and water, but also fire, police, protection, EMS, and being basically an entity which represents one master plan community. They can't provide those, they need to go out and farm those out, or hire third parties. Typically, they're hiring the neighboring towns to provide those services. But as this board here knows, it's difficult to plan from year to year when you don't know whether you're going to need those three or four extra police officers, because the contract may go to the next town, and then the next year, they're going to ask you to do it. So there's a big uncertainty, and that's also a problem for businesses looking to invest within Southfield. And the consequences of no private investment, if we cannot get significant private investment, there's going to be no further residential development. We're going to clearly stop if we don't have sufficient sewer and water. There will be no commercial development, there will be no amenities constructed. The off-site improvements which are related to Southfield, if we can't get beyond the current level of development, there will be no off-site improvements, and that's a critical component to some of the improvements which are going on on Route 18. There'll be no tax revenues, there'll be no new state revenue to pay for the Parkway bond. Many of you are familiar that the Parkway that runs from Route 18 out through the Pilgrim Highway is being funded by the state with certain clawback provisions should there not be sufficient assessed value and taxpayers on the ground. And finally, there'll be no further host community payments. The sources of the problem. Why do we have this issue? We have a lot of excellent people actually sitting in this room today that work at tri-town and fully respect what they do. We just have a situation here which is spinning out of control due to the fact that we have overhead ticking away and we don't have revenues coming in to match. So what are the sources of the problems? We have regulations and agreements that ignore market realities. An example of something that ignores market realities would be this particular, the whole set of agreements in here have a requirement to stop building at a thousand units unless there's 300,000 square foot of commercial on the ground. If there's no market conditions currently for 300,000 square foot of commercial, let alone one square foot, then the project will come to a screeching halt. Another example of a regulation that ignores market realities is throughout the Commonwealth, typically you're seeing 10% of all new housing that's assigned to affordable and low income, and for some reason, when this was put together, that number's at 20%. So there are a variety of regulations and agreements that are ignoring market realities. Currently, there's joint control over all major decisions. So for example, if we wanted to go ahead and take a small area that was, let's say it was residential, we wanted to make it commercial, that would be considered a major decision, and that would require a vote by all three towns. I sat at the Rockland meeting, a similar meeting in Rockland, and one of the gentlemen there mentioned to me that it's like jumping through a ring of fire to go through any zoning change in Rockland. Well, if it's a small piece of property, for example, in Waymouth, why should I be jumping through a ring of fire in Rockland? I mean, that's just, it's just preventing from moving forward. It is a problem, and that is a major problem. This is a type of control which is not normal and is not customary. As I mentioned, essential infrastructure, water, wastewater, it remains unbuilt and unfinancable. Currently, it's the responsibility and requirement of tri-town to provide water and wastewater. There's upwards of $40 million to construct wastewater treatment facilities and tie-in water, their various water solutions, we'll get to later, but that is a major problem. Unachievable expectations for timing type and amount of affordable housing, commercial development and recreation facilities. As I previously mentioned, there are requirements to build a variety of things before we can move on to the following phase, and these, we call them triggers, are just not timed to meet market realities. And we also discussed that the towns cannot budget for existing service impacts, as each of the three surrounding towns don't know whether they're going to be asked to provide services from year to year. Unworkable, unrealistic arrangements for sharing of tax revenues from Southfield for delivering municipal services to Southfield. So currently, the residents, the property owners in Southfield, pay their taxes to South Shore Tri-Town Development Corporation, and in response, all of the services come from tri-town. So this is obviously an unworkable situation, as tri-town is not a deliverer of municipal services. Really, the towns are in position to do that. Structures and rules that create misalignment between the objections of the three towns. Again, if there's something that's beneficial, for example, for Abington, and someone in Rockland is not happy with that, well, since it requires a vote of all three towns, it's just a stalemate, it's a constant stalemate. Having two parties agree on anything is tough enough, let alone four, the developer and the three different towns. And finally, on this slide, overpriced services negatively influencing Southfield. For example, water and wastewater is supplied by the town of Waymouth, and then it's marked up by tri-town. So the residence, and we do have one resident here, I see, has to pay almost 50% more for water and wastewater than another resident within Waymouth. So you have a Waymouth resident getting Waymouth sewer and water, and they're paying almost double than what another Waymouth resident who lives around the corner. That's just not very marketable. If we're going to be building homes and building businesses, would you locate your business here if your utility bills are that much higher? It's just not set up for success. Additionally, on this slide, I give you an example of building permits. As you know, the majority of the developable properties in Waymouth, and I have listed down here the Waymouth rates for residential permits, and tri-town charges double. Why do they charge double? They can provide some of those services in-house, but some of the other services, they have to go ahead and farm them out, they have to pay somebody else, whether another town or a consultant. So it's just really not set up as if it's going to be a level playing field. So we're looking to make some suggestions. So the overview of proposed solutions. Number one, and you'll keep on hearing me talk about water and wastewater, because without water and wastewater, this project, this community, this development will come to a screeching halt. You can only build with what you have infrastructure for. We're going to suggest that we, the developer, pay for this. We're prepared to go ahead and fund the cost to construct all of these, the facilities to bring water and wastewater to Southfield. We're going to suggest to empower the towns to control their own interest. We're going to look for the towns to control zoning within their boundaries. We're going to look to have schoolchildren go to schools within the boundaries of whatever town that they live in. We're going to look for building permits to be issued by the towns where construction is going in. We're going to be looking at taxes being charged and collected by the town where each piece of property is located. We're going to be looking for services, police, fire, ambulance, as I mentioned before, all these services which are normally handled by a town, marriage license, dog license, whatever it may be, whatever the town has already set up, already has the infrastructure. If you have a resident, for example, Rockland lives within Southfield, they are Rockland residents, just like any other Rockland residence or Waymouth resident. I know it's a little bit difficult here to sometimes talk about these things, because the way the master plan is currently set up, there are no homes currently within Abington. So most of these comments are directed towards Rockland and Waymouth, and that's just how the land lays out. We're also going to be looking to expand the tri-town board. I think the most important thing about the tri-town board is we're going to look to change the role of tri-town. Again, we talked about moving many of the services and many of the responsibilities from tri-town to the towns, so what is left with tri-town? I believe what's logical and what was originally thought through originally was that tri-town would be set up as an entity that would oversee the master plan. So this is normal and customary in all situations. We have master plan communities around the country. You'll have, whether it's an architectural board or a planning board, that oversees what goes on within a master plan community, and we foresee that. It's somewhat of equivalent to a zoning board that you would have here. We're not talking about making zoning, we're talking about enforcing the zoning, and that's what would we see the main role of tri-town to be moving forward. And finally, I think this is a very important bullet at the bottom here. It says, "Realistic funding for the Parkway." We've had numerous conversations with the state, and the state is prepared to move forward with funding the final two phases of the Parkway. Many of you in this room have driven across the central piece of the Parkway. It's beautiful, I drove through it today, it's wonderful, it just connects the edge of Rockland to the middle of the disbanded base. It really needs to go all the way through to Route 18 to meet its purpose. If it stopped where it was, it would be a tremendous boondoggle to spend that much money for a small piece of road. We need to get the entire thing funded. I'm not sure if everybody here realizes, but the ultimate goal is for this highway to connect all the way, this Parkway to connect all the way to Route 18. It would go up and over the railroad tracks where the current parking garages, parking garage, excuse me, the parking lot exists for the T. That would be moved to the Southfield side of the train tracks, more or less where the booby station is. The booby station would move, maybe not quietly, but they would move down to a base on the Cape, somewhere by Buzzards Bay, so I'm told. And the train station itself would be flipped over to be on the Southfield side. So there are quite a few plans, and they're very exciting plans for everybody, have a much improved T station and parking, and we believe the whole facility would be gorgeous, and the state is prepared to fund that. But the state is only prepared to fund this if they see a way forward, if they see that the developer will move forward, if they see there's going to be funding for sewer and water. So the state has many, many highway and Parkway and other roadway projects that are on their list to fund throughout the Commonwealth, and we hope to be at the top of their list, but we need to give them a reason to be at the top of the list. What our overall goal is to normalize and adjust the timing of the affordable and workforce targets. As I mentioned before, it's currently 20% combined for workforce and affordable. We're suggesting 10%, just like every other similar type community throughout the Commonwealth. We want to allow commercial and senior development to be timed with the market. Currently, there are requirements within each one of the phases for commercial, a certain amount of commercial to be built, and if a certain amount of commercial is not built, the project stops. We understand the original intent of this. The original intent was that the commercial user did not provide, did not cause a heavy impact on the three towns. So let's get some commercial taxes being paid in unison with the residential, but I think we'll talk about this later, how the residential impact here, given the fact that the prices of the homes far exceeds the standard values in Rockland and in Waymouth, that it's actually a positive cash flow item to have housing built, and obviously, any commercial is a bonus. And finally, we're talking about developing recreation facilities that respond to actual community needs. In analyzing the plan and also interviewing Parks and Recs departments of the three towns, we hired a consultant that did that. We found that the lines on the paper showing ball fields, baseball fields, other fields did not necessarily match the needs of the town. We're going to work with the three towns, find out what they actually need. The towns are not necessarily looking for more baseball fields, they're looking for turf fields for lacrosse and soccer, and there's also a need for indoor swimming pools, et cetera. So let's make sure that the needs are identified and that we can respond to those needs. Again, a key provision is normalized distribution of property tax revenue. So specifically, let's talk about Abington. Abington has, in round numbers, about 150, 160 acres, and about 12% of 1,400 acres within tri-town, excuse me, within Southfield. All the tax dollars generated from those properties would go to Abington. One of the fallacies that we have here right now is that the way that it's currently set up is at the end of the day, at the end of the day, when everything's built, bonds are paid off, and it's time to end tri-town, all the properties would go back to, or the tax revenues would go back to all three towns. But before that, there's something called excess revenue, where, so before it's turned over and tri-town still exists, you have all this revenue coming in with over a billion dollars' worth of improvements in residential and commercial. Abington would stand to collect 12% of that excess revenue. So it sounds pretty nice, 12% of over a billion dollars of assessed value. That sounds like a great deal. Why would Abington ever agree, because it's going to require a vote of all three towns, to terminate tri-town? Let's keep this cash cow going on forever. The challenge is, the way things are set up today, it's going to be 12% of nothing. It's going to be 12% of nothing, unless sewer and water is constructed, unless all of these flaws of the current system are normalized, unless we can get building permits, utility rates, all these things to be of reasonable rate, get the state to continue funding the Parkway. Unless all these things occur, Abington stands to be the big winner of 12% when probably a fraction of the billion dollars is going to be within Abington's borders. Sounds like a great deal, but it's a false deal. Meeting with the town of Rockland, they get it. They get it, they say, because they stand to get 42%. 42% when about 10% of the assessed value at the end of the day will be in Rockland. So we can continue to talk about that, and that's what, you know, Abington and Rockland can hang their hats on, as this is a bad deal, and 30 to 40 years from now, we're changing it. We're changing it. You're not going to get 12% of some huge pie, and that's a hard pill to swallow. But again, if you believe that this project will be built under the current terms, then we should stick with that thought. But if you don't think it's going to get built at all, then we're suggesting normalizing everything. The final item on here is tri-town to live within its means. Currently, as we mentioned, tri-town collects all of the taxes, all the real estate taxes, and we're suggesting that all the real estate taxes instead go to the towns and each of the three towns for land within their borders. There are some additional expenses that tri-town has, and we can take that rate and just increase it by a little bit, and tri-town would be able to survive. Tri-town also, by the way, has several million dollars more to receive in entitlement fees, and they also charge every time a plan gets approved, so there is some cash flow. And with a skinny-down tri-town, we believe firmly that they can make their ends meet within much lower overhead. We don't need all the overhead there. It's already, all this overhead already exists within each of the three towns. So I've laid out quite a few solutions here, and these solutions are going to require a legislative change. The scope and breadth of the proposed solutions can only be achieved legislatively. And I underscored the word "solutions" here. When I first met with the tri-town board and with the tri-town executives, I commented on how there's all this blaming going on, how, "Oh, it doesn't work because of this guy was a failure," or "That was a bad idea," or all this pointing. About the same time I came around you, there was the audit by Suzanne Bump. I'm sure most of you, if not all of you, have read that or have heard about it. This is giant blame game going on, and as an outsider, you take a look at it, and you go, "They're all good people, they're all good individuals." It's just kind of a screwed-up situation where it was well-intended by all the people that spent their long, hard hours putting together this massive master plan, and it evolved. From what I understand, it was originally supposed to be some sort of a mall, and then it turned into some other master plan community, and tri-town was there to do one thing, who knows? It's very interesting, but this is 2013, and we now own this property, we are heavily invested, we continue to spend a lot of money, we're going to be required to spend upwards of $25 million to demo runway buildings, quite a bit of infrastructure to be removed, quite a bit of infrastructure to go in, continue to pay host community fees. It's over $100 million worth of investment. In order for us to make that investment, we need to level the playing field, and the only way to level the playing field is to change the way tri-town is governed, and that's going to be through a legislative act. So what remains the same? I went through this slide in detail at the Rockland meeting, and I received probably six or seven, about that, Matt, questions. So I want to be crystal clear, what remains the same? We're going to continue to pay host community fees. We're a development, development should pay its way. As you can see from this chart, and this chart was put together several weeks ago, I believe, we've probably made one or two more, you know, one more payment, so it's, we've paid more than the $737,000. This is by an agreement, I think, it was, there was originally an agreement between, a memo of understanding, I apologize, a memo of understanding between the developer and Abington, and then it was amended one time, and you can see there's still another, approximately $1,006,000 still remaining to be paid out. That is not going to change, we'll still maintain those payments. There is no contemplation of changing the maximum number of residential units at 2,855. Currently, there's 2,855. This 2,855 can be divided into any of the three towns, it's all on Southfield. Currently, the way things are zoned, there's no zoning for any residential land, save a very tiny sliver in Abington. 2,855. Currently, the master plan calls for 2 million square feet of commercial at a maximum and 900,000 square feet at a minimum. We're proposing to maintain that minimum and maximum, stays the same. It still will be a smart, growth, transit-oriented, sustainable community. We have lots of open space, those are the keys to smart growth and sustainability. We're going to keep all this open space, transit-oriented. We have a train right on the site, it will continue to be that. So all these things will remain the same. And we believe that we can build all these things, and all of the three towns will flourish because of the economic engine that we're going to be providing. If you think about it, if you plunk in about 2,800 homes right in the middle of the three towns that have a higher average value than all of the towns in the three markets, you're going to see some spillover quite a bit into the three towns. We expect the residents of Southfield will be gladly spending their money within all of the three towns. Again, I'm reiterating that it's going to be 2,855 units. We're going to revoke the mostly obsolete document, which is the reuse plan, but we're going to update with the core elements. Keep the number of units, we're going to amend the affordable workforce, that's what we're proposing to the state, the Commonwealth norm of 10%, and it's going to be market-driven. We're going to have phasing, which is driven by market, not by arbitrary deadlines. One of the questions that I keep on fielding is, "Oh, you guys, all you want to do is build residential, you don't care about building any of the commercial." I don't know how many times I've heard that. I've heard it from people that I've explained this to, and they claim, "Oh, but I heard it from somebody else, so it must be true." I think we've all learned, if you say something enough times, it must be true, while other people are saying things a lot of times, but it's not true. We're going to be looking to build a mixed-use development. This is a mixed-use community, combination of retail, have a lot of homes there, I think there's going to be some market for some retail, I think everyone will agree. We have the opportunity to build offices, medical offices, we're just around the corner from the overcrowded, what's the name of the hospital? The South Shore Hospital, thank you. Robyn's, you know, we've worked together, she's like my wife, she finishes my sentences, so it's great. So the hospital's right around the corner, and they, I believe they park cars off-site, and it's just, it's just a mess, and obviously, they're looking forward to Route 18 being widened. We think it's a tremendous opportunity. You put the Parkway in, you improve Route 18, we're going to be creating an atmosphere for commercial development. Lo and behold, isn't that amazing? If you build parkways, roads, sewer, water, you create an atmosphere for commercial development, and that's the goal. Commercial land sells for more than residential land. So we believe that if we are successful, that success will include building commercial. So what we intend to do is set aside land for that, and we can set aside land and make sure that commercial will be built. That's normal and customary. Normal and customary is land is, in a mixed-use community, you have land that's residential and land that's commercial. So for example, if the town of Waymouth, if there's acreage in there that's currently zoned commercial, if we wanted to rezone that to something else, the town of Waymouth would be prohibited from zoning too much land. We would still have to leave sufficient land so we can meet the commercial requirement. Okay? Hopefully, that's clear. Another way that we're going to make sure that commercial development will go forward, and again, this is normal and customary, we will go ahead and when we construct wastewater and water facilities, we will dedicate water and wastewater, we will allocate capacity to service all of our land, including the commercial, especially the commercial, especially the most valuable land on the base. And we will continue to pay taxes on whatever town's, at whatever town's tax rate is, at the commercial rate, which in Rockland is the same, but in Waymouth, it's at a higher rate. And again, a lot of this doesn't affect Abington per se, but that's what's going to drive it. it. It's, we're going to have a disincentive to have expensive land that has a lot of value sitting there vacant with sewer and water capacity in place, and it's in place because we spent the money building the sewer and water capacity. So we believe there's a tremendous incentive. Currently, commercial and senior development is required to occur on an arbitrary timetable. Again, there's different phases, Phase 1, and you've got to complete all the things on Phase 1 before you can move to Phase 2, you've got to complete all the things in Phase 2 before you can move on to Phase 3. We're going to propose to remove these arbitrary deadlines and let the project be market-driven. Stronger Home Rule. Talked about this earlier on. Currently, no amendments can be made to any aspect of Tri-Town zoning bylaws without a supermajority vote of the legislative bodies in each town, paralyzing even the most hyper-technical parts of the code. I didn't write that, but it sounds pretty good. I think that's, it's well put, hyper-technical parts of the code. So if we have some small, what, what, what many people consider small issues, but it tips, it ticks over into hyper-technical, then we're going to have to go to all three towns. It just seems ridiculous. It just seems not a way, not, not a way to do business. Who would go ahead and invest $40 million in water and wastewater, knocking down all these buildings up to $100 million, and then be caught on a hyper-technical part of a code that requires the vote of all three towns? It just doesn't seem like a opportunity for private investment, it's just really not good. So we're proposing to empower each town to amend the use and other fundamental zoning regulations that affect its portion of Southfield. So if we have something we would like to change, or propose to change, that's within Abington, Abington through Home Rule, through this body right here, through all of your current rules and regulations, I would have to come here requesting those changes. If we wanted to go ahead and build a, I've heard a lot of things, a wind farm, a skyscraper, a, a casino, whatever it may be, whatever we wanted to do, we came to this board, and you guys said, not just "No," but "Hell, no," well, that would be Abington's decision, okay? But by the same token, if Abington said, "Yes, we think it's a great idea, it would be a great improvement to our community," and one of the other two communities wasn't so sure of it, Abington would have the say. So that's what Home Rule's all about. This is, this is a, this slide is, is a little hard to describe, but Southfield is governed by a complicated array of uneconomical and obsolete agreements and regulations, mostly written before the market downturn. What we're proposing is, again, to keep Tri-Town in place to supervise and manage these rules and regulations in urban design and architectural review, all the technical parts of, of Southfield, which are Southfield-specific. We're going to propose that these be redrafted and submitted to the reconstituted Tri-Town Board for adoption, and so we can move forward. The current concept is called TND neo-traditional housing, it's very popular in Florida and Georgia and Charleston, South Carolina, and Seaside, which is a panhandle community, wonderful places, but last time I checked, it doesn't snow in those areas, you don't have the second alleyway. It's okay, but it's really not common or typical in, in the snow belt, so we're looking to change these rules. Just so you know, the L&R team that originally put this plan together hired out-of-state consultants, in fact, the consultant that was brought in to draft these was from, is from California. So, wonderful plan for California, but not necessarily, last time I checked, it snows here a little bit. I just want this passed before it snows, so I don't have to, you know. Okay. Building Permits and Inspections. Existing Tri-Town issues a variety of permits and inspections utilizing its own staff plus outside consultants. Again, we're going to propose that the permits and inspections for work would be done within the town in which the work is occurring. We talked about the existing Tri-Town Board. Good evening, Dave. The Tri-Town Board is, consists of two members from Waymouth, two from Rockland, and one from Abington. We're proposing to add representation from the Commonwealth. Again, the Commonwealth is going to be the second-largest investor in this community when they add another approximately $40 million to, what about 20, Robin, about 22 million? How many? 30, just this far, 30, and probably another 40 million for, so it's going to be about a $70 million investment for the Commonwealth. We're suggesting representation from Southfield residents, as well as keeping two from Waymouth, two from Rockland, and one from Abington. Again, what we're talking about, the role of the Tri-Town Board, would be administer the plan, not to be in the police, fire, Health Department, a variety of other roles that they take on right now. Again, since this board is going to have a very specific role rather than a far-reaching role, we're going to suggest that there are certain qualifications of, of the people serving on the board, so they understand what's in front of them. And as I mentioned, this all-new board would be, one of their first orders of business would be to review and enact revised, revised rules and regulations. Water and wastewater, once again, I keep on mentioning that we come back to water and We're looking at a variety of solutions for water. I believe Tri-Town has looked at a variety of these solutions, as well as others. We, we believe that there are several good options, whether it's D-Sal plant, Tauton through Brockton, through Abington to Southfield, or MWRA from, I'm going to get this right, Braintree and Randolph and Hanover? Holbrook, damn it. Holbrook. Or there's also a solution of MWRA connection to North Waymouth, and then the capacity at North Waymouth would be shifted, and that would allow Southfield to take on that capacity. So there are several different options. Some of them are working with one town, some of them require working with multiple towns. Obviously, working with multiple towns is somewhat trickier, so we believe that there are certain solutions that we can make a reality. And wastewater, again, there are several different options we're considering. The most feasible solution is to build onsite wastewater treatment plants, and those, the treatment plant and the spray irrigation and, and the effluent would occur within the, the Abington and Rockland areas. We have the option to build multiple small package plants and spread them all throughout the community, or build one large treatment plant. Again, it would be a plant under today's rules and regulations, today's output of the effluent requirements, it would, this is not going to be a burden, this is actually going to be a benefit, provide, keeping all the, the water onsite. Again, the developers is prepared to fully fund all capital needs, to design, construct, operate water and wastewater infrastructure. Again, the word "initial" there is because it's the first thing, it's not, we're initially doing it, we're going to fund it all. First thing is we're going to fund, is that. The connection fees would go back to the entity that created the, the, the capacity, that would be us, so that would go to help mitigate that cost. But again, those connection fees happen way down the line, you build an entire treatment plant, and then you ultimately hook up users. And again, if we built a treatment plant, we would be the owner of the plant, so we would be able to have user fees. Our goals would be to have rates comparable to what everyone's paying in the surrounding towns. Doesn't make any sense, we're not going to attract many homeowners or businesses if the rates are higher. And once again, the developer's going to set aside capacity for the commercial. So we'll build the infrastructure for that commercial, for water and wastewater, and then we'll maintain that capacity. Currently, the Parkway is funded by the state, and we're going to propose that the state continue to do so, and the state takes on the full obligation of the Parkway, rather than having any clawbacks or, or taxing back to Tri-Town or its businesses. We talked about this in length, and you can see the markouts on here, I wanted to call that out, this is not in your, the presentation, which is handed out to you. The markouts are dealing with schools. Now, we, we talked at length about how Tri-Town currently annually negotiates life safety with other towns, and what we're proposing is that these special agreements be rescinded and that each town would take care of the responsibilities. The, the current Enabling Act has all schoolchildren on the base going to Waymouth schools, and we did not look to change that, but after conversations with the town of Waymouth and the town of Rockland, both of those towns who are affected by this, Abington would not be affected by this at all, would prefer that not to occur. Rockland would like Rockland schoolchildren to go to Rockland schools, and Waymouth would like only the Waymouth schoolchildren to go to Waymouth schools. So, this is for effect, the crossouts, the point is this, this is an interactive piece that we're suggesting, there are a whole litany of things that we're proposing, we can't just mark through any one item and have it all work, but we do believe that this is a change which is reasonable. Again, the excess revenues, I spoke about that at length, and I was very direct about that. The excess revenues shared with towns according to a geographic rather than a development-based formula, and host community fees paid to towns, we're going to keep the host community fees, and then the taxes instead will be distributed to the towns based on the assessed value and at the town's tax rate. Again, the tax rate would be Abington and Abington's rate, Rockland and Rockland's rate, and Waymouth and Waymouth's rate. And again, we would set some sort of a town, a Tri-Town buffer, a small amount, so Tri-Town committed its obligations, its reduced obligations. And this is basically repeating the same thing. So what are the benefits of this new tax distribution scheme? I've been asked this many times, "Why change it?" Well, first of all, Southfield's chances for further development will improve when residents are relieved of special negotiated service fees. In other words, the towns that, where you live in, you get services from. Some of those service deals, and, and again, there are now, I believe, two residents here, it's, it's strange, you know, it's a ton of, sometimes it's per month, sometimes it's per call, there's a variety of things, it's kind of a disincentive to, if you hear a noise, to call the police, because then you get charged. It's, it's just a strange system. The, the residents in Southfield, whether they own or rent, they want to be treated just like any resident in any other town. Each town will receive real estate taxes for land within their borders according to that town's tax rate. We're not proposing any bonding risk to any town, so for example, if we do any bonding, they would be assessment bonds, it would be assessed against the land, not, any assessment could be clawed back or asking the towns to be involved. And then Tri-Town, again, would be compelled to live within its means. So, we talked about, and this is the last one, and we'll, it's around 40 minutes to first pitch, so I'm doing okay. We talked about Starwood and Starwood's strength and expertise, financial strength, we talked about some of the problems. I went over a lot of our solutions, and now we're at benefits. If Tri-Town is re-energized by the new statutory mandate and a new board, now it's accountable for its expenditures. The towns are newly motivated to promote, promote development within their borders. So each town would be incentivized to have things built because they would reap the tax benefits. The normalization of cost of services is a benefit for all the residents and businesses, again, we want to normalize everything. And the developer is economically incentivized to achieve mixed-use objections, objectives, excuse me, and that's crystal clear, we talked about that at length, that we're looking to build commercial, we're looking to build retail. I think everyone needs to understand that retail will come once we have rooftops up, it doesn't work the other way around. I can't build a supermarket right there when there are already supermarkets in the market in, in the area. Have to have housing first. And we will realize build-out in a reasonable timeframe. That's an important one for me. Currently, the for-sale component of, of Southfield is clipping along at about 20 sales a year, and ultimately, there would be about 2,200, give or take, for-sale units, could be 2,300, 2,400. It's about 110 years, kind of a long time. And it's a mixed-use master plan community, this should be doing 200 homes a year, 250 homes a year of all sorts and types. I think this marketplace can handle it. So, that concludes my remarks. I appreciate everyone for being patient and sometime redundant in here, but I, I want to make, make it clear that we are solution-based, we're looking to come up with a, a set of proposals which doesn't just solve one issue, solves all the issues, and creates a level playing field, creates a incentive for people wanting to live here, businesses want to establish themselves here, and provides infrastructure to move forward without adversely affecting the three towns. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glance. First, I'd like to open up the questions from the board, and then we'll open up questions in general.
Yes, Bob, a few questions, some more of housekeeping. With the current plan, how many people do you project will live in Southfield when it's fully built out?
How many people? Well, we actually do have projections for this, and I can sneak over my briefcase and tell you, but if it's 2,855 homes, and you have a mix of apartments, senior facilities, again, senior, you're looking closer to 1.25 per unit, apartments is about 1.75 per unit, and housing is going to be closer to 2.7 per unit. So, you may have around 6,000, 5,000 to 6,000 residents, we can do the actual math for you.
I guess the question is more just, you know, when I look at this than I have before, I mean, it, it seems like for Abington, the financial incentive is, is really not there, it's more of a quality of life for Abington residents. So I'm just, I'm trying to get my arms around, what is it like to have a community that goes from 0 to 6,000 people? What does that do for Abington as far as, you know, roads and for the quality of life?
No, that's an excellent question, I just do want to point out that despite many questions about traffic, we, we can't control that, we will not be able to pull building permits, we will not be able to build homes or businesses if the roadways are not meeting a minimum level of service. That is why it's crucial that Route 18 gets wide, not just to accommodate the additional traffic, which has already been calculated into the Route 18 improvements, but also the Parkway, and there are several other intersection improvements around the area. So all of that has been figured in to the planning and the expenses are covered. So traffic is, while it will add traffic, all these are, are covered by intersection and roadway and Parkway improvements. There are other ways that Abington will get additional business again, whether it's stores or shops, et cetera, that the people will, will visit and, and go to. So there, there's quite a bit of, quite a bit of collateral value to the surrounding towns.
The other question you, you certainly focused on is the need for water supply and wastewater. I heard some potential sources for water. Can we assume that one of those sources is in Abington and Rockland's water supply?
All solutions, proposed solutions are good solutions, okay? We have hired the local firm, they're out of Watertown, right? They're out of Watertown, VHB, and our engineer has investigated probably a half a dozen different proposals. different proposals and all of those are on the table. And if your Department of Public Works has not been contacted by Hugh Han, our engineer, then afterwards, if whoever the appropriate person would speak to Matt Barry, he's spearheading that for us and we'd be glad to talk to you. We're looking not just for the least expensive, but timing is also important. We can't, that's why I talk about solutions that go through multiple municipalities. We need something within a couple of years. We can't wait for three, four towns to argue back and forth and the solution happens in 10 or 12 years from now, it won't work for us.
The concern isn't only mine, it's other residents that I've talked to. And again, it gets into a quality of life. Abington and Rockland has their own joint waterworks and, you know, in past years, each town residence, as both Rockland and Abington has built out, has experienced water problems, right? As far as points in the summer and otherwise where water consumption is constrained. So I think that was just more that question that, you know, we've heard rumors, a pipe's gone over to the base and other things. I just would like to know whether that may be in the cards to basically tap into our water source for another 6,000 or so people.
We're currently not ruling anything out. I mentioned three that are the three frontrunners because this is what our engineer tells us are the most likely to happen. If you have additional information, we'd be glad to speak to your Public Works Department and add it to our list.
Two more, Mr. Chairman. Would you like to comment? There was a recent article in the Boston Globe on changes to the property tax policy. And as I frame the discussion, as you've mentioned tonight, that property taxes would be collected by each community as opposed to Tri-Town. And there was a delta of today, Tri-Town's maintaining, they collect about $2.6 million worth of property taxes versus if it went back to the existing towns, Abington, Rockland and Waymouth, it would result in a decrease of about 2,000. And just of the article, the conflict was basically Starwood's doing that basically to save money on the taxes.
Okay.
And the other question that I would have, that's like a 24% drop in property taxes for that community.
I'm glad you asked the question because just because you read it in the Globe doesn't necessarily mean it's true. And the Globe was actually quoting somebody on that. Let's talk about the fuzzy math which is going on here, okay? Currently, the Tri-Town rate is more than the Waymouth rate, okay?
You're talking commercial, not qualified.
I'm talking the commercial and the residential. The Tri-Town rate is more than the Waymouth rate, okay?
Slightly more than the Waymouth rate on residential.
Slightly more and the commercial is more. They're both more.
Yeah, the commercial is significantly more, it's the residential.
That's fine, all right? And in Rockland, we don't need to talk about, really talk about commercial because the majority of the land within Rockland that has any sort of assessed value is residential. And the Rockland assessed rate is higher than the Tri-Town rate. And Abington is somewhat negligible because there's not a lot of assessed value within the Abington property. So again, we need to do the math and I'm not sure that I understand what's being called out. The whole concept here is that each town needs to go ahead and be in control of their destiny, that each town will do their own assessments and then each town will go ahead and collect their own taxes at whatever rate they charge. This is not an issue of, are we saving or losing? This is a matter of returning the value back to the towns.
And again, not to debate it, but again, I see some representations that we're looking for equity with the residents of Southfield in property taxes, but if you give it back to each town, I'm not sure if they have representation in each town as would a Tri-Town, social development and setting and having representation on that board. But neither here nor there.
Can you explain what you just said? Because if someone lives in Waymouth, in Southfield, they will pay taxes in Waymouth, they will vote for Waymouth representation. That is what we would consider normalized, a normal situation.
That's going forward with?
That's what we're proposing going forward, yes.
Proposing. Right now, I don't think that's the case, is it?
No, right now, and again, we have, I believe, two residents here. They vote in Waymouth, they pay taxes to Tri-Town and their representation is, the mayor appoints two people to a five-person board. So that's the definition of their representation. That's not really direct representation.
But again, if I'm a resident of Southfield, again, trying to eliminate the fuzzy math, today in Southfield, the residential rate, I'm told, is $13.26.
That would be correct.
Okay, in Abington, it's $16.55. That's probably not good for a resident of Abington to pay that increase. And in Rockland, it's at $17.58.
That's correct.
So that's a pretty significant increase. You are right, in Waymouth, it's $12.93 versus the 13.26.
Correct, correct.
So.
But again, when you look at the developable land where the actual assessed value is, the driver is Waymouth. That is, you know, I'm an outsider, I'm coming in here, I'm just looking at a map, I'm looking at numbers, that's where the majority of the assessed value is, okay? And I realize I don't have the history of 46%, 42%, 12%, but that's where the numbers are. That's where the land, so the most cog, you know, the biggest mover of these numbers are going to be Waymouth.
All right. My last question is, you mentioned if development stopped, it would stop. But I guess my question is, is I hear that, I hear other parts of your presentation of clawbacks, you know, what happens to the bar? What are the ramifications to each of the three towns if development stopped? What's your end game in effect?
Okay.
If you can't get this legislation passed and some of the things that you want?
Okay, well, let's kind of break it into its parts. First of all, if development stopped, let's take the, most of your case. If the developer, if we said, hey, we're not going to get this through, there's no value to this land moving forward because if there's no sewer, no water, no path for sewer and water, if we're stopped from building anymore because we can't create, we can't create commercial demand without the roadways being in, if the state doesn't move forward, then basically, Tri-Town is going to be starved of a majority of its cash that the developer is providing through its taxes. They'll receive taxes from the homeowners and the few businesses, if any, that are existing. So if we, per se, walk, if we stop paying taxes, Tri-Town could go ahead and foreclose on those properties and they would be the proud owners of all this land and the dilapidated buildings. And so that's what would ultimately happen. And what would it mean to the towns? Well, to the extent that Tri-Town can keep the doors open without all of these tax revenues coming in, then they could potentially look for another developer. They'd be in the same situation with no sewer and water. All the development, all the dilapidated buildings need to be knocked down. It's no different. I really don't see that as being a plausible option. In fact, that's never in my presentation to talk about the negative because we want to be positive, we want to move forward. I'm really not interested in spending all this time in front of all these different boards in the evening to talk about us pulling the plug and trying to scare everybody that way. But the reality is, we're a private equity firm and we're not going to invest money unless we feel we're going to get a return. We're in business. Are we being greedy? No, we're being realistic. Realistically, you can't invest if you're not going to have sewer and water. And we're looking, you know, I hear all the time up here, this, what is it, the public-private partnership? Well, the private's ready to do its part. We just need the public to do its part.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, how many residents are built over there at this point in time?
We are built, about 300. No, built.
Built.
Rogerson is not built yet, they have a permanent.
And you're permitted at this point to?
We've got 600 or so permitted.
600 to. And you have to hit, what, 1,000? Is that what it is in phase one?
Yeah, well, have to hit. Let's look at it another way. In order to move on to phase two, the word phase is somewhat overused here, so I'll do my best to make it clear. Within the first development phase, 1,000 residential units maximum can be built. You can't move on to the next phase unless there's 300,000 square feet of commercial built, certain amount of senior housing of that 1,000 units, I think it was 150 senior housing. Again, if the eventide community goes forward, that will be 220, so we will have met that, plus a certain amount of parks and recreation, some other things need to be done. So that's what's required to all be in place before we can then go to phase two to unlock the next 1,000 residential units.
So in amending the legislation, you want to get rid of that cap? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes. What we're looking to do is, we feel it's somewhat arbitrary. Again, the goal originally was that the towns didn't want this to be a pure residential community, they wanted a mixed-use community, okay? I've used this term before, I apologize if it's taken offense, but I'm not Harry Potter. It's like, commercial, you know, I can't make it happen. I didn't go to Hogwarts. Did I say that right? Okay? I can't make it happen. There are better locations right now, today, for offices. There are better locations in Rockland, right along Route 3. There are many areas in Quincy and I can keep on going on, right off the highway where there's sewer, there's water, there's roadway systems in place, there are other businesses. We just have to remember, we are an infill suburban site. Down a very crowded Route 18, okay? And it's from four lanes to two lanes to the guy in front of Bank of America waving you in to two, you know, right, Dave? You know, it's a mess and it needs to be widened. And once it's widened, we think there's a potential and that's improved. Then it becomes a quick three or four-minute drive to get to Route 3. We also have the other way to go, which is on the parkway, which is not yet widened and straightened out and turn lanes and other things. So once these things occur, plus sewer and water, plus the market rebounding, right now there's.
Just let me interrupt you. But those are all part, I read the master plan.
Yes.
Those are all part of phase one master plan. Widening Route 18, east-west parkway from Route 18 over to Route 3, water and sewer plant being built. So I don't understand why, basically, you're throwing the baby out with the bathwater. You're taking the whole reuse plan, which a lot of people put a lot of time and effort into, and I understand times change, things change, but there was a reason that that plan was developed the way it was, is because, as you said, the residents of the three towns did not want just a residential development over there. My fear is if your legislation goes through, it is going to be a residential development and hope for commercial, which is what we're doing now, but at least the residential is capped at some point in time until you do get some commercial in there. I think, I don't think those were arbitrary. I think those were done through planning councils, using numbers and saying, once we have these number of residences built, we should also have this amount of commercial space built. That's my fear.
I think they were, everything was well-intentioned, but the reality is, this is a C or D location for new offices.
Isn't that going to be the case anyway?
Well, but again, if, unless there's going to be investment in sewer and water and all those things, if that stuff doesn't happen, then there's going to be no commercial.
But again, that has to happen under the current master.
Tri-Town can't do it.
So why can't we work together on doing something with that portion of the reuse plan and not throw the whole thing out?
Well, unfortunately, the way that business, that we're going to move forward with business or anybody would move forward with businesses, okay, let's invest all this money and then hope for the best? That's kind of hard to say, rather than let's invest the money and continue to build.
When you invest, you always hope for the best, don't you?
We're very successful, we don't hope. We do a lot of planning and a lot of hard work.
But there's still some, it's not always perfect, it's not always going to come out the way it wants.
No, there's a lot of risk in real estate development, yes.
Exactly, yeah.
You know, that is the concern. And again, if that's the feeling of everybody in the legislation, et cetera, and this is voted down, then we're going to have to make a decision whether we're going to do any further investment. That's just the reality. I'm a very direct person, I'm not going to soft sell anything.
My fear is that it's going to be what we didn't want it to be, which is why this whole reuse plan was put into effect, was so we wouldn't have just a residential community over there.
Right.
That's my fear.
One of the things that I've heard over and over again, people that were involved in the beginning, is that one of the reasons they didn't want just residential is for it to be a tax burden to the three towns, okay? So let's leave Abington out of this equation for a second because there's really no significant tax burden to Abington here. So let's now look at the numbers for Rockland and Waymouth. And we have been working with both Rockland and Waymouth, running numbers on what the taxable assessed value would be and what the revenues they would be generating. And in both cases, they have excess revenues. Excess, they have positive cash flow. And the main reason they have positive cash flow is because the typical home and residence, whether it's apartment, any of it, all of that within Southfield is about 40 to 50% higher than the Waymouth rate and probably double than what you're seeing in Rockland. So the homes are more expensive, they're pulling in a lot more dollars per house. So it's a concept, but the numbers don't support that concept. The concept that it's going to be a negative drag on the towns is just not true.
I think people have a hard time believing that only because that's always what we've been told, that residential development is not good for, you know, development as far as real estate tax base because it's a drain on services.
We're working very closely with Eric Hart from Rockland and also with Jim McKinney with Waymouth. These are both, one is the town accountant, the other, McKinney is the town CFO. And we're working very closely with them and both towns are surprisingly satisfied, let me rephrase that, they're both satisfied that the numbers that they are seeing are very positive. They are not losing money, they are making money by having more expensive housing in their, within their communities. And oh, by the way, ultimately, some commercial down the road and that's a huge benefit as well. Plus, they're getting building permit fees and host community fees, so there's quite a bit of cash going back to these towns.
Couple more questions. I know you've done a lot of planned communities. Have you ever done any like this where three towns are involved or is this somewhat unique?
There are not a lot of sane developers out there who agree to do developments that are in three towns, let alone three New England towns that have open meetings, et cetera. It's just very difficult to operate. Typically, most of the master plan communities that I've been involved with around the country, they're in pro-development, growth areas, Sunbelt, Carolinas, Arizona, Colorado, where there are quite a few master plan communities being developed. And the towns are set up for it, they have, they're completely geared for it and.
Because you keep going back to the phrase, each town is going to be in control of its own destiny. But I think the whole purpose of setting this whole organization up and putting this plan together was so each town was not in control of its own destiny. All three towns together said, this is what we want to have happen here at the airbase. Everybody bought into it. And now, all of a sudden, the whole thing is being thrown out the door. That's, you know, I think that's the problem, again, that I have, so.
Listen, Abington is a very different situation than the other two towns.
Yes.
Okay? And what it was set up to be was a mall originally.
I know what it was.
And that's wonderful, but, okay.
Well, actually, what it was set up to be originally was an airport.
Okay, so Plan A didn't work. Okay, let's go to Plan B, that didn't work. So we need to evolve with the times. You know, I feel sorry for the typewriter salesman, you know, they're out of business. You know, we got to. you know, they're out of business, you know, we got to move on.
Right, and, but I think that was why this plan was set up, is so we could move on, but in somewhat of a controlled way that all three towns bought into. And now, it seems to me as though, okay, let's pass this legislation where each town is in control of its own destiny, which kind of pits one town against the other. Waymouth thinks this is a great idea, because they're going to get more tax revenue. Abington, maybe not so much, Rockland, you know, it's kind of dividing everything that we've tried to bring together in a united way, as far as the plan goes. Again, that's my opinion.
And there are two ways to look at it. You could look at it that's dividing them now, but actually, it's allowing each town to control its own destiny, which, if you, if you keep it the way it is, Waymouth is, has the potential to have animosity towards the other two towns if it can't move forward, as Rockland and...
And I know something has to be done up there, I know the water and the wastewater, that is a huge issue that definitely has to be dealt with. I was just hoping that towns of Abington, Rockland, Waymouth, the Tri-Town, Starwood could all sit down together and maybe come up with a plan, but where does your legislation stand at this point? Is it all drafted, or is it...
We're close. Again, it's proposed legislation, let's not call it legislation yet. It's not legislation until it's actually approved. We are in the middle of drafting it, we intend to distribute a draft to this board here, to the selectmen in Rockland, to the town council, and the mayor in Waymouth, and a copy also to Tri-Town. We'll distribute that sometime next week, that's our goal. We have attorneys involved, so it takes a while...
Yes.
...to get that done. And what our goal is not to do is have everybody arguing over each little verbiage. This is a package, this is not a "Strike this and strike that, and I like this and I don't like that." This is a comprehensive package with everything...
Your overall plan is what's going to be presented.
It's overall plan, that's correct. Are we amenable to changes? You know, granted, we just looked at one of the, one of the proposals that we kept in place, because it really didn't affect our ability to move forward. Rockland and Waymouth both objected to it. Makes sense. We're, we're not looking to be dictatorial, although that's how we're being viewed. We're looking to propose a set of solutions, and we have not heard any other solution from anybody else that would make this a feasible community to move forward. We've heard none. No package of plans, just blaming. And again, that's when I started here, nothing but blaming. "Oh, but five years ago, oh, but 10 years ago, I was on this board." That's all interesting, but we're investing money every single day, and we just can't continue to play that game.
Do you have somebody who's sponsoring the legislation for you, or how is the process going to go forward?
Well, the process is, we're going to be looking to get the local legislators that represent all three of the towns. I haven't had a chance to use one of my favorite lines about the crack in the map, right?
What is it?
The crack in the map. That this 1,400 acres is at the crack in the map. It's in, it's in Norfolk County, it's in Plymouth County, it's in three different towns. We have three different state House members, two or three different state senators, two different US congresspeople, right? So, it's, there are a lot of people, so we're going to be looking to get the state legislative team, all of them that represent the various bits and pieces, or as many as we can, to co-sponsor, that would be our goal.
And how long do you think the process takes once it's filed? Do you have any idea?
Well, I'm not an expert on the day-to-day in the Commonwealth, but I can tell you that the session ends on July 31st. So, it's like the sausage maker, it goes in on one end...
But you'd expect, you would hope that it'll be done this legislative session?
Correct. And again, submitting it is not the same as how it will ultimately turn out. We may submit it in one way, there could be amendments to it, but the important thing for us is to get it submitted and acted on in this legislative session.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions, not as in-depth as these two gentlemen, but you have some proposals. Now, do they include changing the way that it's set up? In other words, is it going to be the same plan that was originally presented with the about apartments, houses, commercial? Is that staying the same, or you're just changing the way it's going to be rolled out? Or is you actually going to change some things on the original proposal?
Okay, excellent question. Are we going to be manipulating the master plan and moving some of the zoning designations and the types of housing, et cetera, around? Is that the question? Well, at the end of the day, look, we're going to be trying to put out a market-driven community, so today, we're looking to modify the governance of the community, how it's managed, how it's run. Once that is modified, then we will have the opportunity to work with whatever town, whatever land lays within, and work with that planning board, zoning board, whatever they may have, if we're going to change anything which is a major deviation. So, it's kind of like one step at a time. Is the end game to change for the sake of change? No, we'd like to have a market-driven plan, but we're not going to change the threshold of 2,855 units, and we're not going to change the maximum or minimum of commercial.
Okay. Now, it says there's 10 taxable parcels in Abington, would there be actually 10 residences in Abington?
You're not looking at my documents, so I can't comment on it, you'd have to ask somebody who prepared that document.
I'm looking at the map, and I see little dots there, and I assume...
That's not my map, and it's not my document, I apologize.
Okay. So, I guess that answers that question. It looks like Abington is basically two-thirds of a golf course, that's what's proposed now, currently proposed.
That's right.
And you said that some of the recreational things may change depending upon the need of the community.
That would be correct.
So, do you think the golf course will still stay there? I don't golf, so I'm not asking for that reason, but...
I doubt highly that there's going to be any entity which would finance a municipal golf course here, given the number of golf courses that are in the region. There are 46 golf courses within a 15-mile radius of Southfield. Now, some of them are private, some of them are public, municipal ones. You're talking about a brand-new course at low rates, because it's municipal. Okay? That's going to cost about $8 million to build, plus any structures such as cart barns, maintenance sheds, clubhouses, you could be in excess of $10 million. That's a very hard thing to finance and to make any money or get any return on it. One of the things that Starwood is an expert in is golf. We own the largest golf course management company in the world, that's one of the many things in our portfolio. And Starwood Land Ventures, myself and my partners, we've developed numerous golf courses. The head of Starwood Land is a golf pro who's opened and managed and built several golf courses. We know golf, we know what it takes to make it profitable. Unless somebody is willing to spend a lot of money and get no return for it, this will never get built. I mean, all of you, all of you are, all of you have your areas of expertise, this is one of ours. It's a wonderful concept, it's a wonderful plan, but this is not a core golf course, this is not a core golf course where people are paying memberships for memberships.
Right, so that gets back to my original question as to, so the plan is going to change, because that was part of the original whole concept, that there was going to be a golf course here and commercial and housing, so it's going to be tinkered with, the original plan.
Ultimately, once, what our, what our game plan is, is once the Enabling Act has changed, if we want to change any uses, make any major changes in Abington, we would have to come in front of this board, follow your rules for making any major changes, that's correct.
So, if there's no housing in Abington, and there's no golf course in Abington, there's just basically wetlands in Abington and no tax revenue at all, so we pretty much, it appears to me, and we weren't going to get that much in the, in the initial plan anyways, but now it seems like all we're going to get is traffic. I mean, that's just opinion, that's not a question. But I would like to, if it's all right with the chairman, I know you said there's some residents that live up there, can we ask what their opinions are of this plan at some point, or, it's a public meeting, so it's up to the chair, but I just wanted to, I'm interested to see how the residents, first of all, I don't even know if they're happy up there now, the way it's going, or if this is what they envisioned to happen, and I'd like to see what they, how they feel about any proposals. That's all I have.
Thank you. I have a lot of questions, but I'm only going to ask a couple. First off, I want to thank Bob, Robin, and Matt for coming. Thank you. This town, when I can remember distinctly the town meeting, and we voted overwhelmingly to support this, and the theme of that town meeting was for local control. And now, it seems, and you explain yourself very nicely, I give you credit for that, but it is, there are a lot of questions in and amongst our community. So, probably the first one I want to ask is, do you have a realistic idea of when you might have a plan together for sewer and water?
Okay.
Just a rough idea.
Do we have, well, Matt is working very closely with the engineers right now, and we have a few different solutions for wastewater, including onsite treatment plants, okay? He's met with engineers and also firms that build these plants. So, we believe ultimately that's going to be the best way forward. Rockland has issues with its facilities right now, I think they're affluent, is not currently meeting, which, which agency? EPA? EPA, MIPA? They're not meeting MIPA standards with what they're, and they have issues with how much is flowing into French's Creek, that's where they ultimately outflow to. So, that was one solution that we looked at. We looked at continuing our relationship with Waymouth. Waymouth currently takes approximately 1,000, will take up to 1,000 units and 300,000 square foot of commercial, but Waymouth is in the MWRA system, where it goes all the way up to, what island? What, Deer Island?
Deer Island.
Deer Island. Are there any deer on Deer Island? No, not anymore. It goes up there, and there are certain pipes along the way, goes under rivers or creeks or things that are constrained in size. So, all these facilities would need to be, for hundreds of millions of dollars, need to be upgraded, so there's just no more room in that system. So, we know what we can't do, so wastewater, there's just so many fewer options, okay? But for water, there are several options, one of which is not drilling wells onsite and creating and digging lakes and doing reservoirs, et cetera. That is not an option. It's not an option for a number of groundwater reasons, which Robin can spend another two hours, you would definitely miss the entire game, talking about those, right? Yes.
Just call me up, though, I'm going to help manage the ball, so we've got to get going.
Yeah. We're fortunate to have Robin on staff, she's, has expertise in environmental law, and, believe me, there are a lot of environmental issues, but also believe when I say that they're all being taken care of, and we're working very closely with the Navy to get everything cleaned up.
But again, would you be expecting a year or nine months, you expect to have some kind of plan, so you could say, "This is how we're going to..." I mean, you mentioned that there's no really viable plan right now, and there isn't, I understand that, but, and we're looking at certain options. You must, as a developer, have an idea of one you'd like to have.
Absolutely. Let me answer that, because you asked it a different way, what's a timetable? The timetable is, as soon as I can convince my company that we, there's a strong likelihood of this revised enabling legislation being approved, as soon as that happens and I can start spending money, Matt and Robin will start spending a lot of money on planning and engineering, because it will take upwards of a year to get the water permitted, and probably closer to a year and a half to two years, maybe that long, to get the sewer through, through the Commonwealth, and then you have to do the construction work. So, we're going to run out pretty soon. We're going to run out. We have, as you heard everyone speak, there's about 600 planned, and we have, we're working right now on the, on the next, next 400 as we speak.
Okay, and just, just one of the, going forward, there was a lot of questions, and initially seemed like we didn't even want to talk, or it seemed like that anyways, and I understand the rumor mill, probably the rumor mill capital of the whole East Coast and the town of Abington, but how do we get the answers to questions that we might have going forward? You know, I mean, this is a lot of material you gave us tonight, and you, like, you used the term, "This is not my map that you're looking at." That's fair. How do we look at your map? Or how do we, I mean, you're going to, we're going to make proposed changes, you know, Route 18, like Kenny said, we're going to get a ton of traffic. I just got an email from a Conservation Commission member, and it's going to widen two lanes, they're going to take, you know, it's going to change our town dramatically. And I know the residents, including members of this board, are going to have some questions, and is there any way, do you have an email address or any kind of forum where we might be able to pose questions to you as the developer, you know, without coming to this forum and stuff like that?
Okay, excellent question. First of all, over the past several months, I've dealt a relationship with Rick, and he'd be a great conduit to go back and forth with questions, we can certainly do that. Matt and Robin are local, they'd like nothing better than to come here once a month to this meeting and, and answer questions, or written, look, I can tell you one thing that we're not, is we're not shy.
Nope.
Okay? We will answer any question, come to any meeting. We are, we would like to get the message out. We're tired of a lot of misinformation going out, we're not sending out flyers, or, with half-baked information in it, you know, we're just not doing that, we're not going to play that game. We'd rather speak directly to the issues and answer all the questions, and not, not, this is how we operate.
That's fair.
100% opacity.
That's fair, thank you.
The question, Joe.
I have a couple of items I'd like to bring up for the delivery.
Joe, you might want to, if you don't mind, just so that, so that the viewers can hear the question.
Joseph Shays, Free Wyman Road, Abington representative to the, to the advisory board for Tri-Town. I have been involved with the airbase since 1990, one way or the other. I think, like everybody who has worked on it, we want to have it succeed, and I think we're going to work with Starwood or anybody else to have it succeed. But I think we have, it is a difficult issue, and I think we need to have, you know, we need to work on it. One concern I have is that Starwood does not plan to present the legislation or the revised plans to the towns for approval, except as it involves the individual plans. When the legislation was originally adopted in 1998, I think one of the things those three towns wanted was any changes to the legislation or the plans to go back to all's three governing bodies. The Waymouth Town, now the Waymouth Town Council and the Abington, Rockland Town Meeting. I don't, I believe what Mr. Glance has said, or I've heard him say, is he has no intention to go into town meetings. I think that is a problem, from our point of view. I don't think, if we had known that, I don't think the town would have approved this in 1998. We have shown we're going to work on problems and so forth, and revise the plan. We did major revisions in 2005 at the request of LNR to greatly reduce, to switch to much more residential than we originally planned to. I think we're flexible, I think we're willing to do it. Mr. Glance has talked about, well, the hyper-technical issues on the amendments to zoning that require us to go back to the, all three towns. That has never happened since 2005. I think we're willing to work, and, but I am very reluctant to see Abington to lose its right to approve the plans, Abington, Rockland, and Waymouth to approve the overall plans, because it is an integrated site. It is not three separate units. It is an integrated site, it's been developed as an integrated site since 1940s. I am very reluctant to see that happen unless the Abington Town Meeting, or the other town meetings say they wish to have that happen. I also think we need time. We need time to review this, we need time to discuss it. If I'm correct, Mr. Glance has said earlier that he planned to present the legislation at the end of November. Is that still to schedule? We, in the previous reviews, all the plan, all the changes, there's been a good deal of time and effort needed and required. This is a very complex process, which is very important. I don't think we can afford to be rushed into it. I think we need joint forums, all three towns, Tri-Town and Starwood, together, so everybody, because a question that somebody might have in Rockland can impact us and vice versa. I think we really need to take a look at this thoroughly, as to what the impacts are going to be. And I think we have to have, as I think, as you mentioned, we need to have a better idea of exactly what changes are being proposed. I realize that there is, you know, that some things are going to require the change to the legislation, but I mean, I'm sure Starwood has some idea of more of what they're going to do, because it's not only a change, question of less commercial at this point and to later, but also changes in regulations on how that, you know, does that affect the style of the housing? I think once, I'm very happy with what is there now, is how good the... I think one thing I'm very happy with what there's there now is how good the properties look. What are the changes in regulations going to be? What are they going to look like? I have some specific question, you know, I just think we need more time for the three towns to work together with Tri-Town, with Starwood on this. And we have to be, you know, we have to make sure we understand what we're getting into. I still have major concerns about the commercial growth slowdown. As was stated earlier by several of you, the original plan in 1990s was for a mixed-use development heavy on permanent jobs, not just construction job, permanent jobs. That was reduced in 2005 with LNR. We're now having the commercial growth being delayed. And that's a clear message that has been given. I still have concerns about how that's going to work in the financing, because in all the years I've spent in town government, it's very rare to have residential growth pay for itself, especially with schools. And what is going to happen if there's a huge amount of impact into the Waymouth schools? At some point, it's going to impact, they're going to need funding, and that's going to impact all three towns, all Rockland. And at this point here, I don't know if we can actually say that there will be an A in Abington. I think, as I said earlier, the base has been developed as one unit, as big as it is one. I think if we do separate the three towns, separate the process, each town can make its own changes. We are going to pit, as one of you said, the towns against each other, because what may be good for one town can have a negative impact on another town. A wastewater plant in the Long area, which is what came up in the meeting on October 7th, a wastewater plant in Abington territory property but behind the Waymouth residence on Northern Path of 58 is an issue for those Waymouth residents, and also for Waymouth businesses in that area. So it's not very easy to segregate this, you know, the process, especially if you have large housing lots developments, as some of them have been. They may straddle two or three towns. So I think we need to look very thoroughly at how that is going to happen. I do think this is going to require time and costs. I would suggest the Abington Board of Selectmen vote to approve the use of consultants to help review the plan for us, which may include the regional, the Oak County Plan Council and our lawyers. And I would suggest we do the same as Waymouth has done and ask Starwood fund this. I would also suggest that Abington in the past has had an airbase redevelopment impact committee to review, of Abington residents or Abington Town employees to review the plan for us. I think that needs to be set up as soon as possible, so we have as many people as we, as is feasible in the town government setting that up. Other things I have, I have, as I've said before, by Andy and others, the present plan was developed over many, over a good deal of time and tried to consider many options. There are problems with it, and we can change it. But I think we need to understand, there's reasons for things. For example, the playing fields were in there because that's what we felt the three towns needed, is they needed playing fields, and this was, as was made of all this amenity that LNR was willing to give to get approval. The workforce housing, the extra 10%, was to allow people who worked in the three towns and lived in the three towns to be able to live in the communities. We may need to change things, but, you know, I think we need to take a look at that. We have to, the question of permanent jobs is a major issue to me, because that also is something, I think we've always wanted, but also impacts our agreement with the Navy. If the permanent jobs are being delayed, does that impact, the Navy has raised that question before, on how many jobs are going to be created? I assume if they find out that, you know, with commercial development, it's going to be slowed down, or it's not, you know, it's not feasible this time, they may, there may be questions with them. The other question is, is this going to be, bring, is revised plans going to require approval of the state in another MIPA process? So that's something that needs to be worked on. I have a whole, you know, a whole series of issues and concerns, but I do think we need to stop, to have the town of Abington work on this, but we need to work together jointly. I think, you know, I myself am willing to work with, you know, with anybody to try and get the development. But I don't want to just say, okay, we're going to agree to what changes immediately, without looking at them and thinking about what the impacts are. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Any other questions? Comments? Your chief.
How you doing? John Nato, 84 Constitution. Just in disclosure, I am the fire chief of the town of Abington, but I'm not here in that capacity. Due will be a time I shall have that hat on, because I will have concerns. But as a resident in the town of Abington, my question that I have was asked, actually, I think by all four members of the Board of Selectmen, and really not answered, which is, what exactly is going to be going in the land that Abington owns? It's obvious it's not going to be a golf course, you've pretty much, you're upfront with that, which I appreciate, and I'm assuming your answer is going to be whatever Abington wants it to be. However, my concern with that is, after seeing, really, how you're doing business, it's kind of your way of the highway. If you come back at a certain point in the future saying, this is what we propose for the parcel of land that Abington owns, this is what we want to do, and there is no plan B, please fund it, or please approve it. So is there, and I'm not trying to be, I'm being just as blunt and honest with you as you have been with us, and I appreciate that, but can you tell us what specifically could be going in the parcel of land in Abington in the future?
Yes, sir. Please.
Bob? Yeah, please.
Sometimes at these meetings, we have to wear helmets, so it hasn't got that bad yet.
Thank you, chief. I like someone who's a little more blunt than I am. He's not even paying attention, so. Thank you for your comments. Okay, first of all, want to address a few things here. You said the land that Abington owns, again, if it's land that we own, then we're going to have to work with Abington on the land that we own in Abington. If Abington owns the land, then the Abing can do, you may have misspoken, but I think what you meant is the land that we own, not the land that Abington owns.
If Abington would have to be responding to.
If, yeah.
Each town has its own land, but Abington's land.
No, no. Okay, let's just, let's just kind of break things down into its parts. If we own the land that's in Abington, then, and we want to do something with that land that we own, then we would have to follow the underlying rules and get permits and do all the other things. If we don't own the land, then we're not an interesting party, we're not at the table. So I just want to make sure that's clear. I think that, I think you just misspoke, so let's kind of get to the point. What do we intend to do with the land? That's your question, in Abington. Well, currently, it's contemplated as being a golf course or open space and parkland. So currently, we're looking at open space or parkland. Are there other options? Sure, there are other options, but currently today, we can only deal with what we have today, because we currently can't make any changes. Currently, the way the plan lays out, it's open space. I believe there's also some wetlands, French's Creek runs through there, there's some natural heritage lands, is that correct, Robin? So when you start to carve out the natural heritage lands, the wetlands, all those things, there's very little bit of what we call uplands remaining. And of those uplands currently, they're proposed to be either golf course or open space. There's an option, and we're proposing today that it would, that it would probably not be a golf course, it would probably be open space and parks. That's what we're proposing today. To the extent, let's now, let's kind of project, because the next question would be, what are the potential things that it could be? Well, we may come to this board, and then ultimately through your process, through the open town meeting, and maybe there's a potential for us to propose something else, whether it's a skyscraper, a wind farm, a zoo, a gambling casino, we've heard a lot of things. I'm just, I'm being ridiculous to make my point. Okay? So the point is, we would have to come to this board to get any change, because currently the underlying zoning is only allowing the golf course or the open space. So what our intentions, our intentions right now, straightforward, is that it's going to be open space, parks, that type of thing.
Thank you. Sir?
Can I just follow up here, just from back here?
Sure.
So you could expand on it. My name is Steve, and I am a Southfield resident, so you were looking for somebody. I moved in July 16, 2011, so that's the first grade. Okay? So the question is, I thought the Navy had agreed with that space in Abington, being either open space or golf course, and when they sold it, they said, we're not going to charge any money for it, because we want it to stay in that route. Is that, am I reading that well?
I can speak in generalities, Robin can speak in specifics. The generalities are that we have the optionality to go golf or some open space park. So to the extent that those are our choices today, and we don't envision golf, therefore, we're left with only one other option. Okay? Do you want to get into that?
Go ahead, just go through it. Worth the $25 million, was going on the list.
Wait, hold it, hold, wait a minute, hold it, hold it. If you don't mind it, just because the residents can't pick this up, if you just want to respond to that, would you please use the microphone? And sir, would you please like go through the chair, just to maintain order? You're fine, but I just don't want things to go down. Thank you.
No, the only point I wanted to make was that those acres were not conveyed for free. It was part of the $25 million that LNR agreed to pay for the land. And also, as another follow-up to what Bob was just saying, our permits contemplate either open space or golf, and particularly the natural heritage permit. So in the event the legislation did pass, and in the event Starwood came back to Abington and asked for rezoning to something different, maybe part of the recreational complex or some other vertical development, Starwood would have to go back and seek an amendment of the natural heritage permit, as well as its MIPA permit, which I think was an issue raised earlier here tonight. But again, that's a secondary part of this process. The first part is, we have to change the rules that govern this, and then, once that happens, we'll be dealing with the permits and some of the other issues.
Thank you. Sir, did that answer your question?
Sure.
No, no, honestly.
Well, no, I mean, again, you know, I just try to gather facts, but I can understand them, so I may have been misled all these past years, because I moved in with the intent that there would be a golf course, okay? I understand where Bob's coming from, I don't disagree. I'm actually working with the golf course people to challenge them, why their business plan may not be viable. I mean, I'm trying to help them out. I know he's flexible, and, you know, so that's what I'm coming from. But I have the understanding, maybe I'm disinformant, so I will check in my facts, and I will certainly correspond with you guys, not with the whole world, and, you know, that's the way I am.
And like I said in my question too, Bob, I think there's a lot of questions, probably too many to ask here tonight, and some of them are going to evolve over time. As long as it's a place where we can contact you, we are company, and get those questions answered, it's very, very important to all of us in this town, and I don't know. Is there any other questions in the audience? What else?
Chair?
Administration? Yes.
I have a couple points I would, I'd like to make, if you don't mind. And first, I think, first comment comes back to the first comment that Mr. Deion made, in that this is really a quality of life issue. This is, you know, money's important, but the quality of life for people in this town, and the people in this town in 50, 100 years when none of us are no longer around, I think is the fundamental issue for most of the leadership of all the communities. And one of the concerns that I've already stated publicly, and I've told this to Mr. Glance personally, this is, this is nothing personal, this has nothing to do with who the developer is, but there's, it seems to be a fundamental breakdown here in how government is supposed to work. And there was a time not that long ago, and people would laugh at that, till they've seen how the public sector's worked in the last decade or so. So I think the balance is a little bit even, in terms of the public perception, anyway. The developer, as you know, is hired by the Tri-Town Board, and, you know, the attempt to essentially overthrow the Tri-Town Board and change, change the game in terms of the authority and the oversight of the organization that you work for is something that I haven't seen in my years in government. We have a lot of confidence in the people who are on that board. I think we have, we have one, only one representative, but I think people know him, they have confidence in his ability, his judgment, his professionalism. I think the other communities have the same relationship with the people they've appointed to represent them. So, you know, Tri-Town, and I think there's a misconception that Tri-Town is the enemy, and I don't think that's the case at all. I have, I think, looking at the presentations that have been made, I think we can all see that there probably are some changes that need to be made. However, doing that in conjunction with the appropriate authority, I would, in my opinion, would go a lot further to getting things done in a more expeditious manner. I could be wrong about that, but that would seem to make the most sense to me. I am a little bit concerned also, as was pointed out by the board members, that, you know, what hap, and by Mr. Shay, I think, very eloquently, that, you know, what happens on your neighbor's property has a huge impact on your quality of life. And this, the concept of home rule sounds good from a, from a local control issue standpoint, but it's not necessarily the, the impact of what happens on your neighbor's property here is huge. And I know, maybe it's a little bit of an extreme example, but as we know what's going on with the casino legislation in, you know, in the state. And I know, again, that may be the extreme, but I think as an example, it makes sense. You see what happens, you know, in some of, some of my history with, you know, relationships over regional landfills, you know? You know, one community gets the cash and the other gets the trash. You know, those, those are the types of things that have profound effect on people's property value, their quality of life, and whether we like it or not, and I don't know who said it how long ago, but, you know, this is the, you know, the worst system in the world, except for all the rest, you know, you know, government control, oversight, regulation, as bad as it may be sometimes in terms of the desires and the goals of the private sector, you know, that's what protects the interests of the people. And, you know, we don't always do it as well as we'd like in hindsight, but, but I think, I think we do it honestly with the intention of protecting the rights and the, you know, the standard of living of the people that we represent. And I think there's a fundamental breakdown when you have a private entity that is essentially going around the appropriate authority to try and dismantle the oversight of that authority. And I think that needs to be, I think that needs to be recognized. That is a real hurdle, I think, for people in all these communities. So I think I've said enough, and like I said, nothing I haven't already said publicly indirectly, so, but I think that a lot of the details come after the relationship is clarified.
I think that's well said, but it's the beginning of a conversation. Again, as I want to look at this, is with any proposal, I think somewhere in the middle, I think it's going to be give and take, and hopefully we all, some, one of my colleagues said, want this to be successful, as do you. So going forward is, I think this is a good start, and I don't necessarily, and there was a lot of questions, we could have just sat here and debated all night, I want to try to get, what you gave us, a lot of information. Want to talk to members of Tri-Town to get, you know, what their take is on this, and kind of go forward, as long, again, as long as my big thing, as long as we can contact one of you and get some of these maps or proposals or even the legislation, like Mr. Burbine said, we need that, we have to have that. So that being said, I don't know if anybody else, is he commenting? Okay, so again, I do thank you for coming here tonight and sharing your thoughts and your ideas, and it was very good. Okay, so accept a motion to adjourn. You talk?
Mike, I know we've been after it, and you mentioned it at the starting, but just again, just for the residents, that we have a town meeting on Monday, the 4th, and just because, you know, we've got some housekeeping areas we're going to reduce, or we're going to put back into the, I think, the low for the...
Stabilization.
Stabilization. You've got, I think, I think there's also when the fire, isn't there a, a new...
An ambulance, yeah.
Ambulance, and then you've got some cruises. You've also got something as far as marijuana, as far as zoning is concerned. And again, it shouldn't be, it should only be about 45 minutes. If we get everybody there in 7 o'clock, we don't have to come through the, you know, the next, you know, Monday. And if you, Rick, could just, I noticed that the signs in the, you know, the town, they basically don't have, the town meeting is going to be next, next week, so if we could, you know, make those out, and anything we can do as far as getting the word in, I think it would be everybody's, you know, benefit to get it done and get the business of the town.
Yeah, that would be very helpful. Thank you. Anything else? Not accept a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Motion by Mr. Burbine, seconded by Mr. Coyle, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's 4 to 0. Thank you very much.